Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Education out of order. Mr. Montalvo, can I get you to lead the pledge, please?
I stand one nation on the back, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, minutes of the May 10th and May 24th meeting. So, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If there are additions, we'll accept the minutes as presented. Can you get the sheet for... Maybe I can't read this. His first name is that?
Raquel Luna.
Raquel Luna?
She was here. She'll be back, I saw she was here sitting. Mrs. Luna? You know Mrs. Luna?
Did you want to speak?
Yes.
Oh, no, I didn't want to speak. I'm sorry.
Sorry, you're on the list. Mary Gucci?
My husband and I was first.
Yeah, I'm not...
I'm skipping them. Your case is a union, so your case, the board can't hear it?
No, no, no. It's public. It's probably common right now, so I can't speak.
It may be public, but the board, the board can't hear it. We are obligated to...
I didn't speak about compañeros, moving to the middle school. You don't know what I'm going to be talking about.
Try it again, right? Just be afraid to face us. We're going to be here for a while. I'm here today again because clearly, there's a discrepancy between what's being communicated with my wife and I versus the decisions being made with supposed members of the subcommittee being mentioned. You are clearly writing one thing and doing another. Again, as a parent and as a taxpayer of the town of Wyndham, I question your style of business.
Excuse me, what exactly are you talking about? You're talking about the communications relative to the Bells application?
When I finish, you'll...
That's out of order.
When I finish, you'll know what I'm saying.
That's out of order, sir.
Why?
It's out of order.
Why?
What you're talking about?
Why is it out of order?
You are out of order, sir.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
Tell me why.
Because you have brought this case before the board and...
And it's not, it wasn't finished. It's not done.
It is done.
No, we requested a meeting with the whole board, and where's the meeting?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. You're not entitled to a meeting before the board now. This is a union grievance.
No, it's a public speech. I'm going to finish.
It's, you're not entitled to a public speech on a union grievance. I'm sorry, but you're out of order.
I will not be bullied or intimidated by you...
You're out of order, sir.
Or your style.
I have to ask you to move ahead.
I have the right to ask.
No, you do not.
Yes, I do.
You do not have a...
By the way you're handling my child and...
Turn around, folks.
There's many things in question. You have left with no choice but to request a meeting with the Board of Education, and you have, and it will be request, there will be request, a representation of the State of Connecticut Board, a representative from the town of Wyndham, a representative from the Freedom of Information Office of the State of Connecticut, due to that unethical way your office is conducting business. Like I said, I will be, I would not be intimidated or bullied by your way of business. You will hear from us for request, meeting with all departments mentioned. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'd like to...
This is a comment section.
I know what it is, but you should give us the reasoning why it's out of order.
Okay, because the case that they brought before us at the previous meeting. Mrs. Acosta Torres is an employee of the school district. She has an issue with the administration of the school district. That's an issue between labor and management. There is a contract between the union and the school district that makes that a grievance process, right? We are part of that grievance process and are contractually obligated to follow it. But we're not contractually, it's not appropriate for us to butt into the grievance process at this point. All right? The issue is, the issue is a settled issue. She can bring it to a grievance. If it comes before us through the grievance process, then we can hear it.
Correct. But, but...
We're not entitled to hear it before then, and we shouldn't.
No, I totally agree with you, but I think the board needed to be aware. I wasn't aware of the grievance procedure going on, so I think, I just wanted to be enlightened why this person was out of order.
I mean, as a matter of fact, it's probably appropriate for you and the, whoever's watching on television, to understand that because Mrs. Acosta Torres is an employee of the union, there is a grievance contract. And we're obligated to follow the contract too, it's not just our employees. So, the policy committee looked into the, into the question that was raised at a previous meeting. The, apparently, and I did send emails that essentially raised the issue. Raised that the policy exists, it apparently has been followed. If there's more to be added, it needs to go through the grievance process and come to us that way. It's not appropriate for us to deal with it in a public meeting outside of the grievance process.
You're absolutely correct. I just wanted to be aware of where, where we're going, and I think all board members should be aware of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to say something. I think this is very embarrassing for the whole board. You should give them the chance to speak, and if they're not ordered, then you say you are ordered. But just to blackball them, or whatever you want to call it, and not call their name, doesn't call for it. We are elected official, they're taxpayers, they're people of Wyndham, that we're supposed to listen to them. Now, if when they start that, you can say, okay, this is a grievance, you are out of order, that's fine. I agree with that. But not to let them speak without you knowing what they were going to say, that's not right. Because that's their right to speak.
Now, you understand that, that we're not obligated to have public comment at all?
I do understand...
Okay.
...what you said, but just to speak then and go to the next person, that was not cool. That was uncalled for it.
And was I wrong about what we were talking about? No, I wasn't, so...
That was not very professional.
All right, are we finished with this now?
You don't want to know what I have to say on this, so...
Well, it's not, it's not the time to get into it. That's the whole point.
Well, I sat at the policy committee meeting, and we made a recommendation. Melissa, myself, and Mr. Flores Alvarez, all three of us were in agreement. Ms. Spighetto, Mr. Chaffin, and Dr. Garcia were also there, that this go to a hearing in front of the whole board to be scheduled separately.
Yeah, except...
But wait, no, let me finish. But nothing else was communicated to the rest of the board about this being a grievance. A letter was simply sent to them. No response was made to the policy committee's recommendation.
Are you reading the emails?
Yes, I have been reading my emails.
Okay, then, we'll go back and read them again, because you do know that, that the issue was raised about it being a union grievance. The problem that I have is that if I send this as a memo to the entire board, it could be construed as an illegal meeting.
But you do...
So, what I did instead was I sent out a factual statement of the situation. I also sent out an indication to the superintendent, you all got, to the superintendent, that we check our attorneys to determine if it in fact is a union grievable issue. I figure that's the only way I can communicate with everybody without it being a meeting. So, you were notified.
It's a policy issue as well, though. And you...
The policy committee, the policies committee decided that it was not a policy issue.
The policy committee can't decide anything. It can make a recommendation.
The recommendation was that the policy was followed.
A recommendation was to have a hearing.
Okay.
But we never heard anything here.
No, no, the recommendation was to hear their side of the story. Am I incorrect, Melissa?
No, that was true.
Okay. That was the recommendation, is that we hear the other side of the story and give them the opportunity to air their side of the story, and then make a decision as a board.
All right, except that that would not have been an appropriate thing to do.
Why not?
Because it violates the union agreement.
But it's a policy issue, it's not a union issue.
No, it's not a policy issue, it's a, it's a dispute between the union and management. There's no dispute about the policy. The policy is the policy.
I think...
There's really little dispute about whether the policy was followed.
But the policy was not followed, and that's why you...
Well, wait a minute. Wait a minute. I, I have not heard any indication...
The policy committee did not find that the policy was not followed.
Exactly.
We, we found that we didn't have all the information.
Yeah. And, and if in fact all the information is not available, that has to go through the grievance process.
So, if this child's parent wasn't a staff member, then there wouldn't be a grievance?
Well, it wouldn't be a question of, that's being raised of staff preference, no.
But it, there could still be an issue with the lottery.
It, it's true, if, if the parent is not an employee of the school district, then we do have a different situation.
Okay, just clearing that up. Thank you.
This is about my son. Like I mentioned to you before, the first meeting we had, Dr. Garcia, we're not going to stand our arms crossed, we're just going to keep fighting to the end. You do, you did a lot of things wrong, and the way you go about it is not right.
Without disrespect, Mr. Torres, I, I gave you my finding in this matter. My finding now is final, it goes to the board, is the responsibility of the board. I gave you my finding based on the information, my research, my data, and following the policy. The board now has to make a decision.
Well, but you didn't work with the board.
We can't make a decision.
You do, you do everything alone. You say, boy, boy, you don't, you don't know what the board...
The question, the question you're raising is, is a question about the communications between the administration and, and in this case, an employee of the school district. Correct?
This is about my son. This is about my son, and we're not going to stand our arms crossed, like I told you before. You did a lot of things wrong, so...
Okay.
Well, whatever, if you understood, I'm going to send an email, so just in case you didn't hear everything I said. What we're going to do...
The, the issue is, well, the issue is...
The video last time, which helped us, there's a lot, a lot of people came to help us because a lot of people don't like you. So, a lot of people, I wanted to help us.
At this point, I'm going to interrupt. As a board member, sir, you have stepped beyond appropriate behavior at a public meeting. It would be recommended that you keep your opinions about any board member or staff member to yourself. It's prejudicial to your issue. The points here are well made. Process is not being followed by you.
Order, order.
The issue here is the protection of your wife's rights as an employee of the district. It's a grievable issue. It must be dealt with that way. The Board of Education cannot hear components of that grievance. It would prejudice our ability to be able to be impartial as arbitrators. It must be dealt with through the labor management process. Doing it in a public forum like this prejudices any opportunity for fairness and equity for the grievance. We can't hear this here in this process.
You're right, I apologize.
And, and if you have an issue, sir, with the performance of any member of the district, approach it appropriately through process. Doing it in a public forum is inappropriate. It's, it's inappropriate, sir.
You're right.
So, please, if you have a problem with a member of our staff, of our district, please approach it appropriately.
We will, we will. I said, I apologize, it's done.
Thank you. We have an agenda that we have to address, so if you would please, leave it alone. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I do want to mention something, although the board should mention it, that is posted on the agenda of the board, that the car and courtesy are important elements of these meetings. So, we expect everyone to be here, to be respectful. We should be respectful to members of the community, and we expect the members of the community to be respectful to the board, to the superintendent, and our staff.
Okay.
Maybe I feel good, be able to talk. I just have, it's more questions and more clear, because the email that was sent to me, it was like, the committee, the subcommittee revised my documents, which I had at the last meeting, but any of them has any explanation. That's what I said, like, because the board is...
Okay, so, Mrs. Acosta Torres, we can't hear this. It has to go through the grievance process. We are obligated by contract not to hear it at this point. We have to follow the grievance contracts too. It's not just, it's something that's meant to, you know, cause a problem for you. We're a part of the grievance process. You need to talk to your union representatives about the situation.
But the thing is, I would like to let you know guys, what happened, it was a mistake, and it was an issue of implementation and lack of...
Well, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Okay, let's, let's, let's stop talking about the details. There's a policy. There's, whether, there is a policy. The policy is on the website, it's been there for more than a year. Okay? The question is, did the administration appropriately administer the policy? That's really your issue, okay?
Yes, they did. Why?
Well, now, what?
Why was the decision...
Wait a minute. I'm, I'm showing you, wait a minute.
Excuse me, everyone.
Everything you're saying...
Please, 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 excuse me. This conversation is prejudicing our ability to act as arbitrators.
Yes.
Madam, you cannot speak any further about this subject. You must go to your union. You must, because your rights must be observed. You can't talk about this in an open meeting like this. We can't hear this. We cannot. It is not, because we don't want to, it must go through process. You have rights as an employee, and you have, you're party to a contract. Discussing it this way is not the appropriate method for settling this problem.
It's going to freeze the decision in place. It's going to freeze the decision in place, is what it's going to do.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm leaving the room. I don't want to hear this anymore, because it will come to us.
Really, if you want, if you want to have any possibility of changing the outcome, you have to go through the union.
And then I would like to ask a question. Why that wasn't addressed to me on the last meeting? And it was just addressed after those guys sent me the letter, and you...
I'm sorry, when you brought it to the board before, it wasn't clear, it wasn't clear to me, it wasn't clear to Mr. French.
Right.
It wasn't, it wasn't clear what the, what situation was. When we had a chance to look at the documents that you gave us, it became pretty obvious.
But it explained to you guys the emails, because they were not explained. Because it was a mistake that my kid was selected.
Wait, now, wait a minute. Now, that's exactly what Mr. Collagen is talking about, all right? That we cannot listen to. We can't, we can't have any opinion at all on that question. If, if you bring it up, and we talk about it, then the decision stays the way it is. It's done, because you've compromised the grievance process. So, go talk union. That's what you have to do. Really, I'm trying to protect your rights here to have any possibility of changing the outcome of the decision.
I will do that then.
Okay, that's what you, that's what you must do, really.
Because it's not fair. Anyway, yeah...
Wait a minute. Please, please try to...
It's not fair what is going on, and it wasn't even fair the way that you guys just keep us. I should be talking about compañeros, because now, I'm a mom. Right now, I'm a mom of compañeros, and I'm concerned about how compañeros is going to the middle school.
That's fine. Then you can discuss that.
You can discuss. Yeah. But the thing is, like, you're like people, you feel really bad, and it was really mean that you just guys skip us.
Yeah?
That's really unfair.
Wait a minute.
And you feel bad.
We, and want to address that already. We understand that, and that's something that needs to be taken care of. But if you want to talk about something else like compañeros, by all means, go ahead and do that now.
I would like to know about compañeros, the meeting tomorrow. Why, why it was changed from Monday to Thursday? Because right now, to me, I have a decision or going to the meeting tomorrow, or going to the kindergarten orientation, because I cannot be...
I will address that. No decisions will be made. We're not anywhere near ready to make any sort of decision by the committee by making a recommendation to the Board of Education. It's in process. But the agenda didn't get posted quickly enough. It had, it had to be rescheduled. There are going to be many more meetings about compañeros. This is not the end meeting. Simple as that. It's a working committee, madam. It continues to work. A decision's not being made Thursday.
I would like to be able...
Then please come.
Go to the...
When you can, come.
No, I can, because I have my kindergarten orientation tomorrow.
This is not a new topic, and it will be continued past Thursday.
So, it will be during the summer? You guys will keep...
That's my plan.
Having the...
Yes.
Okay.
That's my...
Yeah, because I, I would like to express my...
Of course.
Concerns.
Of course.
Ideas and all this stuff, with the whole thing.
I welcome your input, certainly.
Okay, and then I will go to the union to talk about my thing.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
That's, that's what I like, when I can be here and not shut down.
Okay. Ms. Luna, would you like to speak?
Good evening. Sorry, I was a little thrown off, because I'm...
You're like the rest of...
I'm just speaking, I guess, more as a parent about the planning and design committee, and as a voter. Just that maybe in the future, that the agenda be more detailed, because right now, there's a lot of rumors going around, and a lot of work was done by everyone in this room to really pass the budget, and I really think we need a lot of transparency moving forward, because we're starting to change the look of Wyndham Public Schools. And I think moving forward, we need to be aware of maybe what our former process was, and how we need to project ourselves so we have a positive image. And that's, I guess, maybe as an employee too, but I, I really want the best for our school district and for our town. And I know that, as a taxpayer, that if I want to see the value of my home go up, you know, it really, the schools make a big impact, and I think we really need to be more clear with our agendas, and just, that's just my big opinion moving forward. If, I understand emergencies come up, but, I mean, a lot of people at Wyndham Center are really scared, concerned, I mean, there are flyers going around, you know, and I know that they're probably not based on truth. However, they go in the wrong hands, and then people are looking online for agendas, and the agenda is posted, but it doesn't have a lot of detail, so, you know, people are, their minds are running wild. So, I just, it's just like a, a point of advice, if it could be possible in the future, just to help things be a little smoother.
Thank you, I appreciate your input, certainly. And having been there was, was wonderful, and I encourage you to come. The brevity of, of agendas for subcommittees is a necessity.
This is not appropriate. This discussion is not appropriate during public comment, I'm sorry. And I was just as guilty in the first conversation, so, this, this conversation is not appropriate during public comment.
Please come, if you can.
You're right, the public comment is not a dialogue. But, thank you.
It's not.
Thank you.
Except everyone seems to make it so.
I just admitted my guilt in the previous comment.
All right. All right. Dr. Gucci?
Yeah, Mary Gucci from North Street, and I have a son in the high school, and one who will be here next year. He's at Bells right now. You know, I was going to bring up public comment, actually, as one of my issues, which is that, you know, over the years, it's kind of been constricted in certain ways, limiting it to certain topics, or not listening. I, I do think people need to get their sentences out before they're told they're off topic, and I have been in that situation myself before, partly because we are parents mostly, and citizens. And with the incredible distressing turnover of this district, we can't go to business administrators often, or building administrators. We, we can't even go to teachers all the time, because they're gone. They leave. And that is an issue. When we come to the board, and I have seen people come here about building issues, I've seen them come about the lotteries, I've seen people come for other reasons, and we just shut them down and say, you can't do it here, there's another channel. There, really, I'm not, so we should all be very much aware that there aren't channels for parents. And that's very, very concerning. And this idea that we don't know which school is going to be open, what program is going to be funded, and which is going to be abandoned, you know, it is really kind of a sense that we're abused. And we had all pulled together about the budget. We don't want to be, we've been woken with, I'm sorry, we're closing this school, and we're opening that school, and it's not always the best situation for the schools. We used to have this idea of having preschool and elementary schools, and that would have worked really well, but now we're just shifting grades here and there, shifting names, and, you know, you're really going to impact the rest of the middle school if you put compañeros in there. Not that I'm opposed to compañeros, but you're going to just make it so they don't have art rooms, and they don't have enough cafeterias. So, I'm, I'm upset about that. And I also think, regarding what people who are parents say, or people who are defendants in cases or witnesses, I, I know this from having been interviewed to be a juror, witnesses and defendants can say whatever they want in public, and, and I'm sorry, it does sometimes affect their case, but those who are judging them can be silent. You don't have to shut them down. It's, if they prejudice their case, that's their problem. However, you need to remain objective. So, it doesn't matter what they say publicly, and maybe without good advice, but you really, I do think, we need a better, more healthful, healthy, and respectful environment in this district, and I really would like to move forward in that direction. I've put a lot of effort into it, and I think we can. But, so, let's try and have a different method about listening to comments, and also give them channels to parents. You have to shut everything down, and it's very distressing to see what happened tonight, because it's going to be horrible on, on the YouTube.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the agenda then. Next item is the superintendents report.
Thank you, Ms. Dr. Murphy, vice chair. We have several awards tonight, recognition. I'm not going to be able to go through all of them, but they are in your pocket, but I think it does merit to recognize, for example, Bells, that we had two students from Bells that attended the Innovation, the National Innovation Convention in DC. Oliver Ganti, fourth grader, and Abby Wallace, an eighth grader. So, congratulations to students from Bells that attended the Innovation Convention. Forty students from Connecticut attended, and two of them are from Bells. Another, congratulations to Nurt Wyndham. Congressman Joseph Kearney was there last week to provide the, the honor to Jarlil Rodriguez, fifth grader in compañeros, who are the winner of the, the writing contest that took place for Black History Month at Nurt Wyndham, in the state of Connecticut. Well, also, the middle school had their junior honor society induction, and sixteen students were adopted last week into honor society. We also want to recognize John Haddock, middle school teacher, that is the middle school teacher of the district, the teacher of the year for Wyndham Public School, and we want to thank her and congratulate her. She's a native of Wyndham, and she's been a teacher for us for over twenty-three years. So, congratulations to John Haddock. I also want to say that, this is the second time in a row that the middle school have the teacher of the year. Last year was Ken Vigon, the teacher of the year, and this year was John Haddock, and they already told me that they plan to have year number three, so three for three. So, congratulations to, to them. There was a robust turnout at the family and community expo, and I want to thank all of them that participated. I believe I saw Mrs. Reyes was there, I think, and I think, we, community expo, and I think there were a lot of parents from, teachers from Bells also there, and teachers, and family members, and administrators, and members of my staff. So, want to thank the community liaison, particularly Maria Anasari, Bill Stover, and all his team, and also I want to thank Margaret Chaney, that work in putting these together. Okay. The next thing is the extended learning opportunity. I also want to say that, this is the second time in a row that the middle school have the teacher of the year, last year was Ken Vigon, the teacher of the year, and this year is John Haddock, and they already told me that they plan to have year number three, so three for three, so, congratulations to, to them. There was a robust turnout at the family and community expo, and I want to thank all of them that participated, I believe Mrs. Reyes was there, I think, and I think, we're in community expo, and I think there were a lot of parents from, teachers from Beres also there, and teachers, and family members, and administrators, and members of my staff, so, wanted to thank the community liaison, particularly Maria Nussar, Bill Stover, and all his team, and also I want to thank Margaret Chaney, that work and putting these together. Okay, the next thing is the extended learning opportunity, those to bring this to your, to your information, to your knowledge, as you recall, we had the report from DMC, and we have a need assessment that was done, a review study regarding how to support struggling students, and also the impact of the coaching model, and so we're putting in place those recommendations to start for the school year. One other thing that we have struggled in the school system is how do we provide tier intervention for students, we have good intention, we have resources, but we have struggled with that, so, we are putting the first, I will say, protocol in place, and it's to make sure that every school in the district has a set time for either intervention or acceleration, so, we're not calling it intervention, we call it extending learning opportunities, no intervention, so it could be for students that want to be a Beethoven, a Picasso, or Mozart, to have that opportunity to expand in music, or art, or students that need to some type of remediation in subject matters, so I do want to, so that we're starting putting those in place, so, we don't want a need assessment to sit in the, in the office of someone, we're putting these things in place, so every school, we have a block of time for extended learning opportunity. The Wyndham ECO program, we have some great news for the summer, to highlight that will take place in the summer, is that our students that are, will be in ten, ten graders, ten and eleven graders, will be eligible for, to participate in a summer internship with a stipend this summer, so they will be coming to summer school in the morning, and in the afternoon, they will participate in Eastern Workforce Investment Board stipend workshop, work experience. Not only that, we have about fifty students that also would participate in an internship, and, yes, fifty students from the ECO program, and they will be placed through Eastcon, through the Workforce Investment Board, so we are so happy that we'll have about fifty students that could come to summer school, and at the same time, be part of an internship, that is, by the way, a paid internship for them, not by the school district, by the way. The Germany exchange program is, I want to succumb to fruition, but it's advancing, as you know, a year ago, or a year and a half ago, we talked about the Germany exchange program, we have continued contact with the school in Germany, and currently we have ten students that have a first interest in going to Germany, so, they attended the meeting in April, so we look at going to Germany next year, so we have ten students from the high school, and the school already said yes, that they will host them, and then the following year they'll come here, so, we're looking forward to, to this trip, and the cost of the trip is, those and airfare is about one thousand dollars, so I guess we'll start fundraising, but those to give you some information that this is moving, and ten students already signed up to go, and we had the first meeting with them, so I'm very excited about going to Germany, maybe I just be a shopper and go back to Germany, I'm excited about that one. And Spain also, so we have two programs taking place, Spain, we have students going to Spain this summer, so, this summer to Spain, the following one to Germany, so.
So, as I recall, you speak German?
I, I live in Germany.
Yes.
Speak in Dutch? Kind Dutch, it's, I was, I was forgetting, but I speak German, so, it's a great opportunity for anyone who want to shop around with us, we're going to Spain.
Shop in Germany a little bit.
Okay, we're going to Spain, and we're going to Germany, so anyone that would like to shop around, our students, I, I think any opportunity for students to be able to learn a different culture and foreign language is a great opportunity. And then we have summer school, those a little bit of information for you, those to take a look at the number of students we have in summer school, K through three, we have literacy two hundred and forty, credit recovery a hundred and fifty, extended school year seventy-five, neural levels forty-two, eyebrow readiness fifty, and that number has increased, these are our seventh graders that are incoming eighth graders, so we will have about seventy, and the ACO enrichment program, so we have a very busy, busy, busy summer school, with lots of students coming in for summer school, that will start the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh of June, we'll not have classes July third, or July fourth, but I want to thank Bill and his team, and, and Dr. Youngblood, that have been working diligently to make sure that we have a very effective summer school. And I want to say also the library, we want to thank the library, because we have a strong, a reading program this summer with the library, and they have been very, very, very supportive of us, so, we thank the library for partnering with us this, this summer. So those are the reports from the superintendent, and we're going to commit this report.
Okay. The Finance and Audit Committee has not met, at least not since prior to the passing of the budget for the school year, which is a big effort for that committee, so, planning and design?
As we heard earlier, planning and design is, is working, we have recently been talking about the compañeros program, and where it might be housed, as a cohesive school, K-8, middle school certainly is one option, there are others, and, and we are working diligently to examine that. The Wells project is all but finished.
It's like a horror movie, isn't it?
No, it's fine, but, no, it's, everything's wonderful, it's just a matter of process. The, the microgrid in middle school and its roof are, again, the roof is, is done, there's a punch list, and we're working on that, that microgrid system has been coordinated and is, is, is functioning, that, that process is not quite done yet, you know, the punch list, the, the technology, and the, and the paperwork and licensing that goes with that. There will be an ongoing conversation concerning the most recent report we, we got from Mr. Townsley concerning the disposition of our high school, and the possibilities, we have some good information in that report, I believe, and it is on the agenda for a conversation about how we engage at, from the next step.
Scheduling public hearings and so forth?
Um, yes, the, the, the report is what it is, and it's, it's, it's objective information for the board to digest and look at, and then decide, you know, how we're going to, I, I think appropriately, we should, we should certainly engender conversation with the community about this building, about the high school and its future, how we go about doing that, I think is, is, is the next step, it must be done respectfully and as completely as possible, but, but it's a difficult thing to gather good information about the way people feel, and that's what that, that's what that report hopefully will do, it will get us, it will get us a baseline to have a conversation.
Okay, so, the town has asked us to plan on leaving the Kramer Building.
Mm-hmm, they have, yeah.
Which means that the Early Childhood Learning Center, among other things, has to be relocated somewhere, it's
Again, correct.
Very difficult to relocate that, and relocate offices, but that's not on your agenda for tomorrow, so where are we in the process of figuring out what, what to do about that?
We had an initial conversation about that briefly, we're nowhere with that right at the moment, we're working on it, we have to work on that aggressively, because we don't have a lot of time.
And, and I know that's one of the reasons I ask it the other, is I think the, we were, that Ms. Luna alluded to earlier, has to do with some discussion about possible places where, you know, so, even though wants to take possible locations and turn them into this is gonna happen, and we're a long way from that, I think people need to know that while the possibilities are out there, we're far from making a decision.
Right, and, and unfortunately, circumstance may require a stopgap move with, with the staff and children that are at Kramer, but the two issues that are on the agenda, in my view, were important at this moment to talk about, because folks were worried about it, and they needed to have somewhere to talk about it, so, we're gonna do that.
May I?
Yes.
I'm wondering, and Mrs. Luna mentioned the different rumors, there's so many moving parts to this, and I think the public does not, is not aware of all the moving parts to this, so, it's, when we take one issue in isolation, they don't get to see the other part, so I think it would be helpful to us and to the public if we could explain to them the different moving parts as a whole, because they don't get to see the city in isolation, for example, all of them has an impact, moving pre-K has an impact on Beres, moving Beres has an impact on the other one, so everybody has an, one has an impact, so if we could let them see all the issues, all the moving parts at once, then maybe they can, instead of isolating.
At our, at our most recent planning and design committee, Mrs. Lambert and myself started doing that, by explaining some of the history and, and how a subcommittee functions, that it's, you know, a process of, of stirring the pot, and throwing a lot of questions and answers at, and, and picking apart the issue, and there in fact are a great deal of moving parts, and we're talking about, we're talking about quickly moving Central Office and Early Childhood somewhere, we have to find a where for them, so, folks are uncomfortable with, with what they don't understand and know, but I would, I would point out in, in closing, that, that the subcommittee system, the committee system that is in place for boards of education is commonly used, it's open to everyone, the, the level of, of detail that I'm, I'm hearing folks be interested in, in getting in agendas and minutes is not, is really not functional, and not generally, generally done, because, because you really can't get down to the minutia, you, you can't send a flyer out every two weeks to, to identify the, the things that are rising to the surface, and that you're willing to be talking about, and that's why they're all open, and we encourage everybody to come and ask questions, and, you know, no one's trying to hide anything, certainly, we want the best for our children.
I think, though, as a board member, I share Dr. Sewell's urgency.
Oh, yes.
I feel like we really need to get moving, I mean, Mr. Donaldson, if we're going to move programs around, needs to get projects in place, and we wanted to redo the floor in two buildings that was approved in the town council agenda last night, but it's not gonna get done now till next summer, so, if we have to be out of Kramer by 2018, there needs to be more urgency in our committee, and I share the committee with you, so I'm, I'm willing to take the responsibility of that, but we need to move with some urgency so that way he can start getting plans in place and form, building committees, because, Paul, you and I both saw how fast the wells went down.
Oh, yeah, winter didn't help, this is the winter, you know, when I'm Phoenix.
We're gonna encounter all of those things as well, maybe not, you know, digging wells, but moving things and furniture and stuff like that with another winter coming up and having to be about this time next year, moving out of this, out of Kramer buildings.
The problem, as I see it, is that you're talking about an early learning, early childhood learning center, that requires some specialized classroom constructions, it's not, it's not just the kind of classrooms that we have even in elementary schools, we're talking about rooms with bathrooms in every classroom.
Mr. Donaldson and I began that conversation only because we were together at another committee meeting.
Okay, so, we have to find a place.
We did.
And then we have to renovate that place, because we're not gonna find a place that has the kind of construction that small children need, and then we have to face the fact that in order to renovate it and get some reimbursement from the state, so that the town taxpayers don't get stuck with a whole bill, and the state's process is less than speedy.
And we have a number of parents and teachers who are uncomfortable about, you know, all of these moves, and, and would like to have some conversation with us, so.
Yes, that's the whole point, we understand if people want to talk about it, figure it out, understand what's going on, but then we also have a, a lead time issue
A deadline.
With the state to, to get the job done, and, and in fact, the date that the town's giving us probably is not practical, because even without, even if we could identify the space today, we probably can't get the project done in the timeframe that we've got, but that's what we have to deal with. Thank you very much for your report. Okay, so, Policy Committee, since Mr. Flores Alvarez isn't here, Ms.
All we really addressed
Is there, would you like to?
All we really addressed was the Acosta's.
Was that, was that the?
That took the whole time, and then the School Planning and Design Committee was meeting, so, we didn't get to anything else?
So you didn't, so, so there, no, well, we're not really expecting to get any more policies out of here, I don't think, because our next meeting isn't, our next meeting in September, scheduled meeting, is our retreat, and then, so the first regular board meeting is not until late in December, early October. Okay, the Executive Committee is not meeting, the only item that we would've had on the agenda was the, was what you all were forwarding to us, and we looked at it and decided that this wasn't, that, that what we, what we were looking at was an issue between labor and management that should be covered by the union contract, and therefore it wasn't appropriate for the Executive Committee to take it up. And I'm sorry I couldn't communicate that as a decision to the entire board, but I think, Mr. French, was, was I correct in assuming that if I'd done so, it could've been considered as an illegal meeting?
Communication.
I, I think it's just a communication, a statement, and that if you're not looking for any replies to it, I think you would've been okay, on a very simple statement.
I did sort of try, but okay.
There's, there's a, a, a problem in this process that we're talking about, we were talking about labor management and contractual rights, the difficulty here is that the union may not be acting, even if they have heard something, without communication from that member, because it's not appropriate for management to communicate the problem to labor, it's appropriate most, and, and statutory for the member to, to go to the union, and if, if that member is not, has not done that, that adds to the timeline and, and makes it more, more difficult, because management, well, once it gets to this point, cannot address it any further, they, they can't address it any further until the union acts in some way.
I understand that that's kind of the issue.
Dr. Sewell, I, I think that you as the acting chairperson can send out all kinds of information, as long as we don't answer, I establish that communication is perfectly all right, it's legal.
It depends if, if in fact what is, we're talking about is a decision, as opposed to, if there was more than just information.
Yeah, I'm not talking about this particular case, I'm talking about everything.
But my problem is, I did send you a factual statement.
Yeah.
Because that was simply information, but when it gets to an evaluation of those facts, and deciding about those facts, now we're talking about a meeting.
Exactly.
So, that's, 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 that's where I had a problem.
Information, and we don't have to reply, that's not a meeting, because we didn't reply.
So I, I tried to provide a sufficient amount of information so that you could understand what, what was going on, but, anyway. Okay, so now we're down to action items, and, first action item, ah, is relative to reference to, entertain a motion to approve the policy on
Alternative Education.
Public schools alternative
Alternative Education Policy.
Alternative Education Policy, I'm sorry, I'm being tongue tied.
It wasn't, it wasn't, okay, somebody.
Move by Mr. Collegian, and seconded by Mr. French, okay, this is the second reading of the policy, is reference to here, or is it left over, I think it's here.
I didn't hear what you said.
It's not attached, can we, when we have second readings, can we still have them attached to the?
It says, it says reference to, but it's not, it's reference to to the previous agenda, so you have to go back to the proprietary packet to actually find it, that's that's
Okay, we will do that.
A point of practice, that's all.
Yep.
I did go back and read it, but it wasn't attached, so, if somebody else was searching the packet online or something like that to see what it entailed, they wouldn't be able to find it.
So we'll put it, we'll put it in the second reading, John it.
Thank you, Ms. Tostan.
Okay, so any further discussion? No? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the Wyndham High School's trip to Spain.
So moved.
Second.
No, this, you don't want a question, Mr. Martin is here if you have any questions?
No.
Mrs. Martin is here.
Mrs. Martin is here if you have any questions.
She took them all last time and brought them all back, so her track record's pretty good.
Mr. Runle, you have your trip to Spain? Do you have a meeting today with your?
No, she was having, yeah, we have.
On the floor, we haven't voted on it yet. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you.
Now you have your trip to Spain. Definitely.
Okay, Lynn entertain a motion to approve the school's security and safety plan.
This is
So moved? Second.
Where was that attached?
That was in your packet the last time, these are
It's also in the packet.
Yes, standard, standard plans that we submit, no, these are done yearly, but they're just standard plan, no revision for them this year, and there were no changes to any of the plans in any of the schools this year.
Except for the names, it says, so, I, so moved, has that already been done? You already moved it, sorry?
Already did.
All right, sorry.
Move by Mr. Montalvo, and seconded by Mr. Collegian, okay, so any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous, okay. I will accept a, a motion to approve the Ed specs for Wyndham High School, that the superintendent provided us at the last meeting.
So moved.
Second, John.
John.
Paul.
John. One of us.
It's a quote right there, John Paul, I'm just saying.
This is, this is our part of the EDO 49, which the town council submitted to the Finance and Administration Subcommittee last night. That committee meets on Monday. The town council will then take up their part of authorizing an EDO 49 for the high school on the 20th.
The 20th.
The importance of moving this along now is that the Department of Administrative Services announced approximately a year ago.
Yeah.
That they were limiting, I guess is the right word, the way it's written, it's a maximum amount that they'll pay, that they'll reimburse per square foot for school innovations, which means that if the, if we get, if we get the renovation plan done under today's renovation reimbursement rate, it will cost the Wyndham taxpayers approximately $2.88 million less, just for Wyndham taxpayers, than if we did the same renovation in a plan put in after July 1st. So that's basically what.
And a really, really important point here is that these resolutions are placeholders.
Definitely.
They don't obligate the town to do anything, to bond anything, they just technically hold this timeframe in place so that we qualify if, in fact, we decide to do something that has to be bonded.
Yeah, the motion will probably read up to $112 million, which is the number that's on the consultant's report, up to $112 million, pending approval of referendum, which means that there's no actual commitment without voter approval, and we can do a project for less than that, if we can figure out how to do a project for less than that.
What the project might be.
But that's, that's up to the town, that's up to the, that's the town council's part of the thing. Our part of the thing is the programs that we propose at Wyndham High School, it's what's in the Ed spec.
And we are working an application, it will be done, it will be submitted by June 30th, pending, pending that we receive all the documentation from the town council.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on the Ed spec? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Let's see, ah, now the fun part of the agenda. Mr. Johnson's been patiently waiting for us to approve the personal recommendations in reference six.
Make a motion, we approve the personal recommendations.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or discussion?
I just want to make a comment that is a massive loss for the Wyndham High School with the retirement of Mr. Ray Foster, my good friend.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
Such a wonderful, wonderful, and a gentleman guy.
He will be missed.
He will be missed.
He will be missed at the high school.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. I'd like to introduce, for those of you who haven't yet, Mr. William Johnson, our new Assistant Superintendent.
And his wife.
And his wife, yeah.
His wife is here. His wife and his daughter is here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Congratulations, Mr. Johnson.
She's going to come join our meeting.
Congratulations. Welcome to Wyndham Public School, and we're looking forward to working with you. It's a great honor to have you as part of the team.
Okay. All right, that's the, that's the end of the action items, so we have a slot here for public comment. If there's any additional public comment, anyone who wants to speak? Okay, then.
I have something I can share with you?
Yes.
I would like to share with you, this is the first list of students that will be attending college that we have, the first list of information. So Margaret did a pretty good job putting these together, so I just want you to have the first group of students that we have that we knew about that will be attending college, and what college they will be attending.
Okay, so let's see, this is a whole bunch, double sided, one's.
Double sided, right.
Okay.
And on Monday night, there was scholarship night here at the high school, and Mr. French and I both attended. Students were grateful and accepted their scholarships and talked about the colleges they were going to, and there are some pretty impressive colleges on the list, as well as some state universities and some community colleges, so very proud, as always, of our students.
Okay. All right, now do we actually have a, something for executives?
There's a very brief one, it's regarding contracts. We have nurses, tutors, so the attorney should be here.
So make a motion, we go into executive session for contract.
Contract, labor, labor.
Somebody's got a second, a second.
Do I have a second?
She's not going to be here till 8:15. She's not going to be here till 8:15.
She's not going to be here until, for 15 minutes?
8:15, yes.
15 minutes.
So Mrs. Tracy made, or Mrs. Lambert made a motion, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Tracy, it's okay. Sorry.
That's all right. I'm so used to getting my name backwards.
And Mrs. Lasari seconded it.
Oh, okay. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Okay, that's a majority at least, if those pay attention. Well, since the lawyer's not expected for another 15 minutes.
Take a 15 minute recess.
We'll take a 15 minute recess.
All right, thank you.
See you guys.